Computer. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Make sure you just, make sure y'all interrupt me if you know I'm gonna do something right. Alright. Na lehagish hakivoh. And, and, and I'm gonna tell you, I had to stop one of our fluent Hebrew speakers and ask them what that word, I said, what is that word y'all are saying? Cause I can't get it. I know what hakivoh is, but what is the other word? And he goes, this word here, remember, it is lehagish, meaning it's the infinitive form. This lamed here makes that word infinitive. And what lehagish means is to submit or to humble. If I were to copy this and go to our favorite, uh, translation key, alright, uh, the P L E N, and, and I would have typed this in there. Lehagish. Look what it says. To serve or to hand over. Lehagish. Lehagish. Please submit or to hand over. Please submit your spirits or please humble your spirits, right? No thanks. Na lehagish hakivoh. Alright. This here next part comes from Psalms fifty-one and fifteen. And as one of our, uh, Akotis pointed out, or Akioz pointed out last class, in the Bible, you'll see the word Adonai, which is Lord. And they use the word Adonai in Psalms fifty-one and fif- in fifteen. Because the Jewish people believe that the Hebrew name for God, or the Most High, is too holy to be spoken. And so they never would say the Tetragamatan, they would always substitute it with, uh, uh, Adonai, which just means Lord. So we have, we have undone what they've done, and so we put the name of the Most High back in there. So we have Yahua. And, uh, maybe, maybe, maybe it pays, uh, maybe it's important that I talk about this, this name, or this spelling of the name real quick. So some people will say Yahweh, some will say Jehovah, some will say, uh, I've, I've heard all kinds of things, right? Yahua. Right? Um, but we know this name to be pronounced Ya'ua. So everybody, say it in two syllables. Ya'ua. Yahua. And, and there is a little, there is a little guttural scratch in there. A guttural is where you kind of grind your throat, the size of your throat together. There you go. Yahua.
Yahua.
There you go. Yahua.
Yahua.
And so this would go Yahua. We have Safta, right? The sheen here makes the S H sound, but we know with the dot over the left shoulder, the S H is just an S. So instead of a sheen, we have the scene, right? So Yahua. Then we have Safta. Safta. Then we have Tifta. Yahua, Safta, Tifta. Ufi. Ufi. Now, we know from other classes that anytime you see the shuruk, which I've highlighted, shuruk, S H U R U K. Anytime you see the shuruk in the beginning of a word, it literally means, it literally translates to and, A N D. And Yahua, Safta, Tifta, Ufi. Uh-huh. Don't, don't be afraid to say, to say it if you wanna say it. Cause your, 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 your mouth and your ears have to work together if you're going to, uh, apply it to your memory. So don't be afraid to say it. Maybe you could put yourself on mute and just talk to the computer, okay? Um, but don't be afraid to say it. Yahua, Safta, Tifta. Ufi. Here we have Ya'ed. Remember, that's the shuruk underneath here, there's dot. This is the shuruk, and, I mean, I'm sorry, the shidik and the u, so it's called a shidik u, it's one vowel, shidik u. So Ufi Ya'ed. Now here is where it gets, uh, a little, this, this, we, we slaughter this word all the time. So let, let's, let's say about the numbers, right? Te. He. Le tihila tikah, alright? Let's break it down one more time. We know that this is ta. And those two dots under ta are the shva. Right? The dot in the middle is to call a dageish, but we ignore the dageish on the ta. Why do we ignore the ta, the, the, the dageish? That dageish was put there for people who spoke a language other than English, other than Hebrew. And at one time, they needed that dageish there to distinguish between the sounds. But as those generations, you know, get older and die off, and new generations come on that, that speak Hebrew fluently, that nuance is kind of fading away. So that, that ta, that ta doesn't need that dageish in the middle anymore. It's there to stay true to the Hebrew, but it doesn't really have a difference anymore. So this is t, and that shva makes a little subscript e, remember? It makes a little subscript e. So we have te. He. Now, this is where it gets kind of confusing, right? Here we have the lamed. And the lamed also has that dageish in it. So whenever the lamed has a dageish, what it is telling you is you have to say the lamed twice. And we have words in English that also require you to say a le- a double letter, like summit, like commit, right? Um, name another word that has double letters in it.
Little.
Little? Yeah, you go little, right? Yeah, there you go. You, I mean, on- once you start, once you start associating those things together, it becomes very, um, it becomes very clear why those things are the way they are. Alright, um, so here we have Heel. Right? And then we have to say the lamed again. La. So let me, let me do like this. Heel is the first syllable. And then la. Te. Ka. Ti. Heel. La. Ti. Ka. Tihilatika. Yahua, Safta, Tifta, Ufi, Ya'ed. Tihilatika. Let, let me say this last word one more time, alright? We have the ta with the shva underneath it. And that shva makes a slight e sound, so we have te. And then we have heel. Hey makes the h sound, the shidik makes the e sound, and then you have the lamed, just heel, H E E L, if you will. Can I, can I write it next to it? Let's see if it'll let me write it next to it. T. Alright, then we have heel. Alright, did we say the, the L again? La. Then we have the, the next ta, which is right here. Te. Trying to get this, boy, this is a challenge. And then we have Ka. Let me decrease this down size. Oh, I know what I gotta do. Hold on. Zoom back out. There we go. Alright. I wanna get this, um, I told you last time that we were gonna go over this last time, but we didn't. So I'm gonna go over a little bit today, just so we can get an understanding. Alright, zooming, zooming back in. Alright. Tehele, Tihilatika. And there is a syllable break right here. Te. Heel, La, Chika. Tihilatika. And that's that double L, that lamed, that dageish, that dot inside that lamed makes that lamed appear twice. Tihilatika.
So is that why, I'm is that why we are blending the lamed with the, the hey in the first part of it?
Yes ma'am, that is why you're putting that lamed there. That's why that heel is there, the H I L, right? And that's also how you spell, when you say hallelujah, all those Ls, it's only two lamed's in hallelujah, but there's a double lamed there. It has the same dageish in it.
Okay, so whenever it's a double, we need to blend one of them with the previous?
Yes ma'am. So, when, when, whenever she got, it's, there's only like seven or six, it's called like the pagat, like tagat, so it's some weird, weird way they have it in a, in modern Hebrew, hagat, tagat. And those six letters, they all have the dageish forte in it. I think it's the dageish forte. I'm confused sometimes, the terminology gets away from me. But it's, it's either the, the dageish forte or the dageish linei, one of those dageish. And whenever you see a dageish in one of those six letters, it means you're going to double up on that letter. And, uh, I might, I might show you, I might try to pull it up on, uh, the internet to show you which letters it is. That way there's no confusion, but just for the sake of getting through the introduction, um, we know that this dageish in the lamed means you're gonna give that L to, uh, to, uh, pronunciations. Tihilatika. Yahua, Safta, Tifta, Ufi, Ya'ed, Tihilatika.
So the tau, the first letter in that, in that word, it has the dageish, so that's not doubled?
No ma'am. So this, this, uh, dageish is one of those things that I told you was put into the language. Because when people started coming into Israel in the nineteen hundreds, uh, they spoke everything other than Hebrew. And they had to add these extra things into the language to, to get people on a, a common foundation for pronunciation. And over the course of the four or five generations that are there, a lot of those nuances of language have slowly started to die away. And so there is no longer a need for a lot of those dageish. And you'll also see things like cancellations, like under this ta, you see this straight line, and that's a cancellation. That cancellation mark was also put there for people who speak something other than Hebrew. Um, you'll see some double nikudes, I don't know where some are right now, but there are some double nikudes as well, um, that are in here, that were put there for translation and transliteration. So there's a lot of things that are kind of slowly going extinct that we could talk about, but as a, as English speakers, you're not gonna hear the difference, and so we just kind of skip over them. Now, had this been like a biblical Hebrew class, and then we were doing the final exam over these things, then yeah, it would be important to know. But for what we're trying to do, it doesn't really, uh, it doesn't really make a difference, okay? I'm gonna go back to the top here real quick. Um, na lehagish hakivoh. Yahua, Safta, Tifta, Ufi, Ya'ed. Tihilatika. Alright. Then we go to, this is, uh, numbers thirty-five, numbers ten, thirty-five. We have puma Yahua. Ve afusu oi vecha. Ve anusu misanecha mipanecha. Puma Yahua. We know the ve, the ve is the same as the u, right here. These both mean and. Whenever you see these, uh, vavs with the dageish or the vav with the shva at the beginning of a word, we know those mean and. Alright, ve afusu oi veika. We always blend all those syllables together, but we shouldn't. It's, it's five syllables. Oi veika, oi veika. Ve anusu misanecha mipanecha. And we always do it three times. Puma Yahua, ve afusu oi vecha, ve anusu misanecha, mipanecha. And of course, I'm not gonna go over the, uh, I'm not gonna go through the, the divine salutation like that because it would take all of a class, but I will read it one time, alright? Korom koh, koh hakivoh, le ya'ah, Yahua. This is the feminine and masculine representation because the Creator is a balanced spirit of masculine and feminine energy, and that's why we have le ya'ah Yahua. Le ya'ah Yahua, ya'ah kadosh Israel. Israel being one of our site words. Can't call yourself a Hebrewer, it's like, and you don't know Israel, right? Le avenu, abba, right? Our fathers, to our fathers, or to the fathers that belong to us. Le avenu. Adanenu, this is the word, we get the word Lord, our Lord. Amashiach, the Messiah. Le nasi kov or nasi ka. Right, to the, the princes, nasiq, le nasi ka. Le sorav, the ministers. Le aturav, to the crown, or aturav just means crowns, but we know it to be crown brothers and sisters. Le aturav. U le koh. Yes ma'am.
I was talking to someone else.
U le koh. Asadi. And to all, right? U le koh, and to all. Alright, let's look at this real quick. We have the word koh, and we have korom koh, right? Praises all, giving our praises. In all honors, korom koh, koh hakivoh, giving our praise in our honor, right? So we have here again, u le koh, and to all. Asadi, right? Those, right? Lo. Lo alo, right? Lo alo. Lo alo she lo alo, lo alo she kore vaki, koh, I'm sorry. Lo alo she kore vein, right? Lo alo she rovin. Alo she alo she rico king. She na vaki, right? She na vaki. Bishmo. U le manu. Ani mevareka otikim shalom alech. And that, and there's a reason why I'm not gonna go through all of those words. Um, that would be maybe a class in and of itself. One day, we'll go through, guys, I promise you. One day we'll go through, and we'll go through all of the divine salutations so that anybody who wants to memorize it or learn how to say it, you can say it, and you'll, you'll get it good, right? But we just go through that introduction because it's, it's, uh, it's customary in the kingdom that we go through the introduction, and that's why I wanted to go through that. And no, it's not perfect. Yes, somebody that might come ahead behind me and say, or he's not pronouncing that right. And I, I defer to their expertise on it, okay? I'm not a, I'm not a, a native Hebrew speaker. I defer to their expertise, but I can get you through it, you know? They'll know what you're saying when, when you, when you go to Israel, okay? Any questions on this? Yes ma'am.
When you do take us through this, would you provide us with the nikudot for, for it? It'll help.
Yes ma'am. So, uh, what I'll do this week is I'll go through, and I'll put all the nikudot. That's what I was doing today with the lesson was using, uh, P L E N to put the nikud on the, uh, the work for today. But I will put the nikud on there, cause, uh, I do know that we're still in that second or third year of learning Hebrew. Um, for, for those that don't know what I mean, when you, when you go through grade school in Israel, people always ask, how do Hebrew, how do Hebrew speakers know how to read Hebrew without the nikudot? And the answer is, they don't. For the first two or three years of school, they are totally dependent on the nikud. And then once they get to grade four and grade five, they slowly start weaning you away from using the nikudot. And then you are, have to rely on the context of what you do know in order to pronounce the words. And that does sound hard and impossible, but that's because we come from a second language standpoint, okay? Um, so even in Israel, they use the nikudes at least until you're what, nine or ten? And then you're expected to know how to read and write without it. So, uh, the nikud is there for us to use. It is textual information. And so I will do the work, and I'll put the nikud on there, just so we can have it, okay? I understand how it looks, it looks nikud. Uh, but just give me, give me a week to do that, cause it does take a little, uh, process, so. Um, we talked about this last week as well. We talked about, uh, the letters and the sounds they make. I'm gonna go through this one time real quick, just for the sake of any newcomers in class. So in the far left column in blue, you have the Hebrew letter. And then the next column, you have the name of the letter. The third column is the sound the letter makes, and then the last column is gonna be the English transliteration of that sound. Alright, so whenever I'm transliterating, whenever I'm taking the Hebrew and I'm transliterating the pronunciation of the Hebrew word, these are the transliteration letters that I use, okay? Um, I do want you to notice before we get into it, that, um, all of the consonants are capitalized, and all of the nikud, all of the vowels are lowercase. Okay, so we're gonna go through this real quick, and I can give you this, a copy of this document if you want. I suggest you print it out and put it on your wall and study it, because it's good to have, okay? So we have hala makes the ah sound. Um, bate makes the buh sound. Not the b sound, but the buh sound, just the buh. And we talked about, we talked about this thing called, I'm writing it on here, this thing called a phoneme, right? A phoneme, uh, is the smallest um, the smallest, what, what was the word I used for that? What's the definition? Phoneme is a smallest articu, articu label. Thank you for helping me, cause I, my, my brain is um, sound.
Smallest, the smallest unit of sound.
The smallest unit, there you go. That's, that's better. The smallest unit of sound, unit. Alright, so for instance, in the word cat. So, in the word cat, there are three phonemes. You have the the c sound, you have the a sound, ah, and you have the t sound. That is exactly how we teach language to non-English speakers. We have to break down each phoneme, because not every letter will have its own phoneme. Some letters share phonemes, like when you say the word tough, O U G H. You, you can't break down, people who speak Spanish, they see a word like tough, or rough, or brought, or caught, and they try to pronounce all those letters in there, not understanding that all four of those letters create one phoneme. They create one unit of sound. So, uh, the nikud, the, the nikud is also one unit of sound. Every letter, every, uh, nikud mark creates one unit of sound. And so you have to decode all those, you have to decode all that information, alright? So let's, let's try it again. We have ala makes the ah sound. We have bate makes the buh sound. We have vate. Now, notice that the bait has the dageish, and the vate is not. So when you see this letter, bate, with the, the dageish in it, it is not, the, but it is not the same dageish as in those six letters that just mean the sound's double, alright? So the same keystroke, but they mean different things, alright? I know that's a lot of information, but I just, you gotta know that all of those dots are called dageish, but they do different things for different letters. That's the, that's the key. That they, they, they are called the same thing, but they do different things for different letters. Um, so here we have the bate and the vate. We have the gimel makes the guh sound. We have the dalit makes the duh sound. We have the hey makes the huh sound. The vav, which we know is the most universal letter of all the letters, makes the v sound, just like the vates. Unless it is the vav with the shva, or the vav with the dageish, and it can change, right? Um, we have the zain makes the z sound. Or maybe we should, that was a z, right? Z sound. Z would be two, uh, would be, would be two phonemes, right? The z and the uh, so it's a z sound. And this would be more like a w sound, not even a v, not even give it a v, it's just a z sound, alright? Then we have the chet, that's one of those gutturals. Chet makes the huh sound. Like you're coughing up a loogie, or you're scratching your throat, rhinology season, right? We have tet makes the t sound, not to be confused with the ta. Why? They have two letters that make the same sound, only y'all knows, alright? The tet and the t. We have the ude makes the u sound. And in English, this could be the letter i, this could be the letter j, or it could be the letter y, right? That's how you get Jehovah, that's how you get Yahweh, that's how you get Jesus. That's how you get all the letters with the i in it, right? Um, Jeremiah, all those letters. Alright, so just keep that in mind, can be transliterated into any of those three letters. Um, calf makes the k sound. Can also be guttural, and it has two functions. Uh, can somebody explain to me why there are two, uh, letters for the calf?
At the end of a word, it changes.
So one, one of these is called the calf sofits, there you go. And the calf sofit drops, has a tail that drops below the staff line, and it only appears at the end of a word. Whenever calf appears at the end of a word, it has a tail that drops below the staff line. If it appears anywhere else in the word, it looks like the backward c. We have the lamed makes the lu sound. We have the mem, and the mem sofit make the mm sound. We have the noon and the noon sofit make the N sound, right? This is uh the only one that doesn't drop below the staff. But don't confuse the noon sofit with the calf sofit. The calf sofit has a longer hat on it than the noon. We have submit makes a S sound. Ion doesn't make any sound, this is the only letter that doesn't make any sound, okay? Ion only makes the sound of the Nicud that you apply to it. Other than that, you won't say it. We have the pay. And this pay should have a dagesh in the in the mouth of it, cuz it has a dagesh. And we have the fe. Pay and fe. Wanna great, let me give you a great, you leave me alone. There you go. There we go, alright. Alright. Pay and fe. Um we we saw this pay and fe uh right here when we were doing the uh right here, right? Yahwa, sah, ah, right? Tif, ah, uff, e, right? All three of these letters have that fe in it, alright? Yahwa, sah, ah, tif, ah, uff, e. There you go, instead of fe right there, with no, with no dagesh in it. Then we have, we're here, right? Uh kuma, yahwa, vei'ah fu, vei'ah fu su, right? And look here, we have the pay, mi paneika, mi paneika. So here you have the fe and the pay in the same verse. Alright, just keep that in mind, you have the pay and the fe. Then we have sadi. Now, everybody, I want you to say the TS sound, it's a it's almost like a Z, but with a Z, you got a little bit more, your tongue is a little uh your tongue is a little more violent on the air, it restricts the air more, you say Z, right? The more your teeth, when your heart palate, that is sadi, is is more of a soft Z sound. There you go, sadi. This is where you get the words Zion or Zadik, right? Um which means righteous, sadi and zadik, yes. Now we have kof. Now, keep in mind that kof is is really a, is really more of a K sound, right? The only reason why you might see uh kof represented as a Q is because in English language, um the the Q comes right before the RS and the T and that's kinda where kof falls and the alphabet is right before the RST. Remember, Q or L M N P, Q R S T U V. So they put a Q here sometimes because of where the kof falls in the alphabet and so as to not confuse it with the calf. But it could be a K or a Q, there is no quah, quah sound in Hebrew. So there is no Q sound, it's always a K sound. We have the reish, the rrr sound. We have the sheen, which is like shhh. And we have the scene, which is a soft S with no, eh with no H, right? Keeping in mind that sheen has the dot above the right shoulder and the scene has a dot above the left shoulder. We have ta or tav, doesn't matter how you say it. Then we have the vowels. Amat makes the I sound as in father, right? Father. Tak makes the I as in father. Zeddy, zeddy, remember, this is the the sadi, same sadi, right? Sadi makes the A as in they or you can say they. Thank you for that. Um sekel makes the E as an egg. Eh eh, as an egg. Shiddic, shiddic makes the E as in feed. Now, although it makes the double E sound, when I transliterate it, I always transliterate it as the lowercase I. That is where we got uh this here, remember this? Uh teheel, right? Teheel, there is the shiddic right there under the hay, that dot. And I always transliterate it as the lowercase I. Why do I transliterate it as a lowercase I? I could easily put two Es right there, it does the same thing, but the Is just take up less space. So um I I put the I there because it takes up less space. Alright, but it makes the E sound as in feed. If you know anything about Spanish, I, eh, E, oh, oo, that's also why it's as an I and not a not a E, right? Because I wanted to make sure, I state truth, this is a transliteration. Uh there's the shiddic U, shiddic U is the same thing, makes the E as in feed, you'll see these two together. Um the vav makes the O sound as in boat. Colon vav is the same thing, boat. All of these are the same, they are mean boat, make the O sound as in boat. Um kaboots makes the oo sound as in food, right? Same, uh oh, what happened? Okay, well, there we go. Alright, then this here makes the O sound as in food. Time that happens, guys. There you go. Alright, the shavah is 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 unique, right? The shavah makes the E sound, like a little small E and I always draw it as a apostrophe, right? So here, this tehe latia should be an apostrophe like that, you might see it like that. Tehe latia, tehe latia, I draw it as an apostrophe, so you know that it's the shavah. And all of these are the same, these are the double Nicud and they all just mean the same. Drop the shavah and go with the um the other one, right? Ah as in father, ah as in father, eh as in egg, right? All the same thing, right? I just wanted to rush through that real quick. We talked about it last week, I can give this to you, you can put it up in your house, put it somewhere when you when you study and you can look at it, alright? I don't mind you guys having that, uh I'll make sure you guys get that as well.
Well, Jonathan.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm gonna need that, okay?
Okay, absolutely. Absolutely, I I I'll put it, I'll send it to your email, I have your email. Alright, so I'm gonna close out of this, that was all I wanted from that, that was a I'm gonna leave this open cuz I wanna go through the sight words maybe a little later on, but we'll we'll minimize that. And I wanna go here. So we were talking about conversation, we were talking about conversation. And I know that um, you know, as we are learning Hebrew, what what tends to happen is there are things in language that we call high-frequency words. High-frequency words. And what high-frequency means is, these are things that you're gonna say all the time and you're gonna have to memorize them and say them all the time. Um Ms. uh Nalo, you have your hand raised?
Well, Slika, it was up too long.
Oh, uh did I miss your question?
No, that was earlier, Slika.
Okay, alright. Uh like I say, if you have a question, please don't, don't feel any kind of way about interrupting me, okay? I tell, this is what I tell my students at work all the time too. If you got a question, just interrupt me because I can talk and talk and talk, you know? Um so just don't, don't feel bad about it, just say, hey, you you hold on one second. Uh rock, regga, right? Excuse me, uh y'all can uh let me, let me have a, let me, take a break, take a breather, let me have a a minute to give a question out. Alright, cuz I'm here for you guys, I'm not here for me. Alright, I'm here for you guys, so I wanna make sure you leave it and understand it.
That's a dear.
So we we apply the Nicud to this and as I told you, uh you will never see the Nicud applied half of the time. If ever you get a a piece of writing in Hebrew and they use the Nicud, they're gonna use the Nicud comprehensively, they're not gonna decide which words they wanna use it and they use it half of the time or use it some of the time. The reason why I am using the Nicud some of the time and not all of the time is because you're not going to learn how to recognize these words without the Nicud if I don't give it to you without the Nicud. So um you gotta start looking for patterns, right? So some words are sight words, like shalom is a sight word, we should all know what shalom is. But there's other words here, you might not know what some of these words are. And so I'll give it, I'll give you the word with the Nicud, but then the next time I give it to you, it won't have the Nicud because I've already given it to you once with the Nicud and I'm not trying to create a dependency on the Nicud. I'm trying to make you uncomfortable because that is the only way you're going to grow, okay? So I wanna make you, I wanna make you slightly uncomfortable. I wanna make it slightly harder than it needs to be for you the way you can, you can kind of grow in your Hebrew studies, okay? So this is just part one, uh it's a eh la, eh lech, right? Eh lech, lech one or echad, right? Part one, that's all that means is part one, this is not gonna be on the test, I promise you. Alright, so part one. Uh does anybody want to try to read the uh blue section while I read the uh or I'll tell you what, you read the, you read the black section and I'll read the blue section. Any takers?
Hey.
Thanks.
Okay, so I I I highlight it and then you can read it.
Shalom.
Shalom, okay. Now we have, um, okay, so let let me explain to you what is this. This is a conversation, we talked about high-frequency words. We know that when somebody says shalom, then you reply shalom and then they go into maslam, maslamet or maslamka. And you say, oh, tov me oh, vei'ata? Did you know that, right? Vei'ata, and you, you could say shalom, then then that person would have to respond, oh, shalom. And you would say uh maslamet or maslamka, how are you? Right? Maslamet, maslamka.
Right.
This this here is keh. What is real, what what you read it, no, you can do it.
Okay, I had to come off a mute, I gotta make this thing bigger cuz I'm on the phone in the car. Okay, a keh. No, Slika. Aha, aha. Okay, now that's too big.
I'm sorry.
Ha, ha, so, harim, ha sorim. Is that first word correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, aha, ha sorim. Um, so, sorim.
Okay, so I'm going to
Ha sorim, sorim, that's, that's like good evening.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is a car. Now, remember one of our rules, uh and Brother Hill, I know you, if you're still with us, uh you can write this rule down, right? You'll you'll need it, right? We have a rule that whenever we see the letter olive, right here, always olive always makes the I sound, right? That that that's a rule you could write down, uh olive always makes the I sound.
Okay.
Now, in 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 writing that rule down, we understand that a lot of these rules can be bent, most of these rules can be broken, but we have to start with a foundation. So one of the rules is olive makes the I sound, always olive always makes the I sound. Another rule, uh Brother Hill, that you could write down is this one here. Um the rule goes like this, never the vav appears between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. Whenever the vav, and vav is spelled V A V, whenever the vav appears between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. So here we have sha- uh sheen, which would be sha. Then we have the vav here, making the O sound, we have shalom. And the vav makes the O sound, shalom. Shalom. This is lammet, this is the vav or the vav making the O sound. And there's the mem sofit, mem sofit, so we have shalom. Shalom.
Shalom.
There you go. Now, so that, so we have two rules, right? Whenever the vav appears between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. And here we have the same rule, the Nicud on there, right? There's the vav between two consonants and the vav makes the O sound. There it is again, there is the vav between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. So you can apply this rule almost comprehensively anytime you see the vav between two consonants. There's a vav again, between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. So we, so I'm gonna read the first two lines, it says shalom, and then you might even reply shalom, right? Shalom, shalom, and then a car. Olive, this is chet, it makes the K sound, ahar. We have ha, what's this? Ha? So? Ha? Ra? Im? Azoh haraim.
Azoh haraim.
Now, you gotta say all those, you gotta say all of those uh, you gotta say all of those uh va- all of those syllables now. Ha, zo, ha, ra, im, ha zo haraim. Ka, ha zo haraim. Let's break down this, let's break down the vowels again. Wanna, wanna put them in different colors, alright?
Please, more more.
Yes.
Uh, maseh, achar.
Azeh?
Maseh.
Maseh, what is?
Car?
A car.
You tell me?
Car, cock.
But sorry, I've been sitting up here trying to figure it out.
Is it before? Is it before or?
No, no, you're you're close, a car is the opposite of before, it is
after.
After.
Okay, so before is le, no, le, le, um, oh, sorry. Le phone, le phone.
Yeah.
And then after is akare, oh, there you go right there, akare.
Akare, yeah.
Let's say that, I'm clear.
Yeah.
Wow, okay, there it is.
So I I've put all the syllables in different colors and we can sign them out. So everybody signed it out on your own, see if you can sign it out. Yeah, there you go.
Azoh haraim.
There you go, azoh haraim. There you go, azoh haraim. You guys are reading, and you guys are reading Hebrew. You guys are reading Hebrew. And so we know, what what do we know, what do we know about this word? Somebody break down what we know about that word, azoh haraim. What do we know about the ha? So this first ha, we know is just T H E, the. Azoh haraim, what else do we know? Azoh harain. What else do we know? What do we know about that?
He was plural.
Okay, that's good. What else, what else? Anybody else have anything else they wanna throw out there? Okay, hey, if, if not, that, that's fine. I mean, but that's, that's pretty good. I mean, you guys are, you guys are looking at this. And decoding what you're seeing. So that's, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm asking the question. What do you notice, right? Cause you're noticing that whenever you see, for the most part, not always. But for the most part, whenever you see the ha, you can always assert, you can always question whether or not. That, that hay is part of the word, the root word, or if that is a nominal prefix. That is changing the state of the word. A car, azoh harain, tovim. What do you guys notice about tovim? Okay, tovim is plural, I heard somebody say it's plural, yes? What is the root word? Oh, it's good. Oh, it's good. Let me see what I, let me, let me see how that translates. I, I put the translation in out here, let me go through the translation. Hello, look at that, good afternoon. Good afternoon. Okay, somebody read the next part here. Or i- if it's masculine, you would say Maslamka. Or to a lady, you would say Maslamet, to a man, you would say Maslamka. Difference is, I mean, there, there is no spelling difference. Difference is only, uh, distinguishable. On the, uh, pronunciation. I moved to a different room, uh, my brother-in-law is cutting my grass. I want that in the recording. Can I still be heard? Alright. Maslamka, Maslamet, and there we go with that. Whenever the vav appears between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. Okay, so Maslamka, Maslamet, what does that mean?
How is your peace?
How is your peace, or how are you? Exactly. Alright, so now what do we have here? What is this? Ne besedah, alright? I mean, pronunciation is, is, is on you, right? Bebesedah, bebesedah. I don't know which one is, whi- which one is which. You could say it either way, they're gonna know what you're saying in, in Israel, okay? If they correct you, just go with their correction, right? Ani besedah. Or ani besedah, right? I am doing well, I am well, right? Now, what, what's next?
And you?
You, right. We know that whenever you see the vav in the beginning of a word. It, it can always assert that is, it is talking about. And, and let, let me highlight it, this is a, dealing with this Western, uh, language. Um, word processor. Alright, ani besedah, veata, veat, vat, right? Vat, this is, and you feminine, vat, veata. We have, ahead of stage, you know it.
Anaknu.
Nachnu bebesedah. So, question, is this person talking to one person or more than one person? How can you tell this person is talking to more than one person? In the E, right? The E tells you it's one, one person. And the Anaknu, which is another form of ani, ani and Anaknu. These are the same word, there's different forms, I and we, right? Um, there's a good lesson on YouTube or, uh, yeah, Tahila, uh, Morat Tahila. She, uh, she talks about the, uh, the interpersonal pronouns, right? I, you, he, she, they, them, um, it's a good lesson, you guys should watch it. I'll try to find it and post it in the group. Um, to, to watch, if you wanna know about the ani and who is he and he is she. Anaknu bebesedah, right? What, what is this? Uh, that's, that's not Zadi. I don't know if Brother Hill was still on the call, but you noticed that the rule for vav that we wrote down. The rule for vav does not apply right here, because I gave you the Nicud for the vav. So remember, the rule for vav, the rule for vav was, whenever the vav appears between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. There is an unless, and that unless is unless the Nicud is provided. If the Nicud is provided, you always read the Nicud. So this would not be, this would not be a soak, this would be a suke. A suke. What do you think a suke is?
You.
Like, um. Just like asking a question, so you. I can't say you're good, you are right, I don't know.
Okay, that's fine. So you, you're trying to see if this person, you're trying to see if this person has time to talk to you.
I think it's.
Are you busy? Ta, you can say at, a suke. At, a suke or ta suke, right? Let me see if I have it up. Um, I wanna show you, um, what a suke is. Um, let me see. I wanna show you what a suke is, right? We have a suke. Right? A suke. Now, here it is in the construct state, a suke, it's a par verb, right? Busy. Um, let's, let's go on this one here. X out of that, and let's see what it says. So for masculine, it's a suke. For feminine, it's what? Yeah, there you go, suke. Or for they, right, you could say atem, asukim, right? Remember, i- i- if, if you're saying atem, it was more than one person, you wouldn't say a ta, you would say atem, right? Masculine, atem, asukim, or aten, asu tim, right? Sukor, atem, asukor. Yeah, this is feminine, atem, asukim, aten, asukor. What it means in, in English is, are you busy or are you occupied? You could say, I'm busy, I'm at work, right? Ani asuke, ani asuka, I'm at work, I'm busy. Alright? Here's the infinitive, la suke, la suke. Yeah, see that? It's a, that's why I like this website. This website is really good for learning how to decode some Hebrew. Guys should get in, get, get a, get really acquainted with this website. It's called Pyleen. Pyleen in Hebrew just means, um, just means verbs.
Dot com.
Pyleen dot com, yes ma'am. And if you don't have a Hebrew calculator, that's okay, because right here, you see. It gives you a Hebrew calculator. It's a, a Hebrew, a Hebrew keyboard.
Okay.
Gives you a Hebrew keyboard. This is, this is my number one go-to tool for decoding Hebrew. Alrighty, so a ta suke. What is the response?
Hello, ani. Rock.
Hey, hey, no, you know, you, you're, you're on fire. You're reading it, you're reading it. That's, that's exactly what it is. What's that word? We, we know that word. That, don't, don't let that big word get you scared. You know that word. I'm, I'm asking, are you busy? A ta suke, and what does the person say? Lo.
No, not busy. He's watching television.
Yeah, lo, ani rock. Now, look, now look at this. Remember, uh, somebody, somebody got confused a little bit when they, they, when they saw this. Ayin, they thought it was a. So, here's the Zadi. They do look alike, so you gotta be careful with the letters that look alike, okay? So this is zofay. Now, if it was feminine, it would be zofa. The fe and zofa, okay? And, and, and those just things, you gotta just get used to. There's masculine and feminine. Sometimes they're the same, sometimes they aren't. Sometimes they, they, so, well, sometimes they're spelled the same. Sometimes, like in the case of a suke. You, you have an extra hay or an extra letter on it. You just gotta get used to that. It comes with time. There's no way. There's no way to memorize it. You just gotta get used to it. Sometimes. Sometimes or not.
Masek rock.
Masek rock? What do you think rock means?
I heard it earlier, but I don't remember. Well, you said rock reggae?
Yeah, she, she told you. What, what is it, Israel?
It means Jeff.
Rock, only or just? Yeah, see it right there? Rock just means just, I'm just watching, right? That's a good word to, uh, to try to commit to memory. It's a two-letter word, right? It's very easy to commit to. Just remember what it means. Right? And when we say, let's say I'm talking too fast, we say rock regga, right? Just a minute. Rock regga or rock zofa, zofay, I'm just watching TV, right? Uh, let's go back to it. That's a good, that was a good question. That's a good question. Alright, so we have. Ani, lo, ani rock, zofay or zofa, betel avizia. And there's that double, there's that double U'd again, right? The double vav, I mean. Eh, betele, and this would have, this here would have that double, that, 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 uh. That digesh in it if I had the Nicud on there. Betel, le, vizia, telo.
And the bay is in or what?
In, yes.
In television.
I'm watching in television, yeah. It's weird, but that's, I mean, that's, that's what it says, you know, that's, I can't. People, I had some students one time and they were trying to sign up some Hebrew, and they would sign it out correctly. Then they give you this twisted up look. I say, look, bro, that's what it says. And I don't, I mean, who knows why it sounds funny? We got words in English that sound funny, like, like tittle and skittle. We got words in English that sound funny. So, this is, uh, there, look at this. Remember, there is a digesh in this lamaet. I, I, I don't, I can't put it in there. Let me see if I can put it in there real quick. Uh, I'll try to put it in there. Care with me. This lamaet here is supposed to have a digesh in it like this. Nope, that's not it. It's supposed to have a digesh. Where's my digesh? Is it? Nope, that's not it either. Where is the digesh? That was right here. Nope. Okay, I can't get it to type in there, but, uh. I don't think it's anywhere else. That's the shiddig. This is not it. So this is the doggish. But it, it won't put the doggish in there, so I don't know what's going on with it. Alright, but, uh, but anyway. Let me switch my calculator back over, my, my typewriter back over. Um, but anyway, uh, this is be. T E L, tell, right? And then, remember, once you, once you say that first lamaet. That second lamaet there, that's where the rule for the, for the vav applies. Whenever vav appears between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. So that's tet, betel, lo. You see that? I know that, that double lo, don't let, don't let that double vav get on you, right? So it's betel, lo, and then you're here, you have V. Z. Yeah, there you go, or maybe the, maybe the Z be by itself, Z, and then you have U, patak, hey. Yeah, betel avizia, telovizia, right? Oh man, Hebrew is just Latin and, and, and Yiddish. Well, there are some words in, in Hebrew. That are Latin-based, and television is a Latin word. So yes, they're right, but they're also wrong. So lo, ani rock, zofay or zofa, betel, telovizia, right? I'm just watching TV. And then we have what?
Ma cora.
Ma cora, or ma coret.
Ma coret.
Now, don't confuse this coret with kof. Resh, olive. Alright, kof, resh, olive, coret is to read. This coret is, what's up? What do you need? Let's, let's prove it. We're gonna go back to Pyleen, and we're gonna type in kof. Vav, resh, hey. Look what it says. Corra or coret, which means what? What's happening? What's happening? It's different from. Kof. Vav, resh, olive, which is to read.
Okay, tota.
Right? Two different words, but even in English, we have words that are called what? Homonyms. Say again?
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, you can ask a question.
Do those words have the same root? I, I couldn't see.
That's a good question. Let's, let's figure it out. Alright, so I'm gonna go back to coret. The one that says to read, and we see the, the root for coret right here. Coret, oh crap, there we go, coret. Coret is a par verb to read or to call, and it's kof, resh. A, olive as the roots, right? Now, we're gonna go to the other word, which is the quarter, coret with the, with the hay. And this one here is a par verb, and its root is. And this one here is a pa'ar verb, and its root is, uh, kof. Kof, resh, eh.
So they're different?
They are different words, yes ma'am.
Okay, so the, I'm saying the root words are different. I'm driving.
That's fine. So, so corre to, so for, for, for feminine, or, well, we'll go feminine. Corra to read has, uh, the root is gonna be kof resh and alif. And corra to, to happen is kof resh hey. One has an alif, one has a hey.
Okay, thank you.
So they, they are different. Yes ma'am, they are different. That was a good question. They are different. They sound the same. They, they, and since they're both pa'ar verbs, guess what? They're going to conjugate the same.
Okay.
You just gotta know the difference, okay? And you know the difference in context. Very good question.
So one of them means to read, my corer, no. And the other one means what?
What's happening? Like, what are you doing? What's up? Let me see, let me show you what I, what I, what I translated as. I'm willing you, we are doing well. Are you busy? No, I'm just watching television. What's up? Or what's happening? You can say I'm busy, or, uh, or I can't talk right now, right? Or you can say what's happening? Try, try using it to, to this week, um, on the call, maybe on your WhatsApp group, and see what happens, okay? And, 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 and we really should be doing that anyway, right? Testing these things we learn. Uh, against, um, our Hebrew communities. To see what's going on, see what you guys can come up with, okay? Cause some things might not be good use, some things might not be good, but I have, uh, my, 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 my friend Parcio tell me all the time. He says, well, you could say that like that, but that's not really how we would say it in Israel. So, uh, I, I, I stand, I know, I, I am not beyond correction, so if you say something and it doesn't come out the way you intended, right, and they correct it, then by all means, let me know the correction so that I don't have to keep making the same mistake. Alright? Any questions about this so far? Anybody have anything they wanna re- look at in section one before we go to section two? Take a brain break. Anybody need a break? Anybody have a question? I'm gonna read through it one more time, just so we can, uh, just we can apply it to, to memory. And, uh, I, I want you guys to, to really work on building your own conversations at home. Think about the things that you would say in a conversation and, and go and, and search out those words, right? Shalom, shalom. Akar hazo haraim. Hazo haraim tovim. Make, make, make sure you get all those, those, uh, syllables in there. Hazo haraim. Hazoraim. Hazo haraim, there you go. Hazo haraim. I know it's weird, it's weird to say all those letters together, but that's what it says. Akar hazo haraim tovim. Mashlom ka, mashlom esh. Ani besedeh, ani besedeh. Veata. How about you? Or, and you? Anachnu besedeh. Atah osuk, asuk, atah asuk, are you busy? Or you can say, ani asuk, I am busy. Ani asuka, I am busy feminine. Ani asika, ani asuka. Alright, uh, low, I need rock. Zofay, Zofa, Betel Avizia. Make sure you guys are saying that, that lament twice. Te- betel low. Tel low. Remember, whenever the verb, whenever the verb appears between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. Even if one of those consonants is itself, it always makes the O sound. So it's tel low. Vizia, and this verb makes the V sound. Vizia. Low, I need rock, Zofay, Betel Avizia. Ma cora, ma corer. What's up? What's happening?
Would you help us to, um, write, build conversations at home?
Yes ma'am. You gotta build your own conversations and just practice it. And then share it with a friend, share it with a friend and, and let them practice it, and then y'all just say it to each other every day.
Uh, oton, be ivrit. Build conversations at home. The word, in Hebrew.
Absolutely. Alright.
What is the word for build?
Um, a- and you know what? I was, I was just thinking about that until you said it too. That's okay. Let's put it here. Banuk, banut? Libanut? Lib, no, libanot.
Libanot, to build.
Leave note, there you go.
Leave note.
There you go.
Okay, so leave.
Leave our notes too. You can do the same thing, right? Uh, but that's whites. See how that word is the same thing, but they're two different words. One is build and one is white. So the same thing with, kinda like, yeah. Um, so let's go here. Leave note. Yeah.
Leave note.
We have what? We have bone, bona. And see, I love, I love the pa'ar verbs, man. They are, they're the easiest ones to know.
For plural, again, it's, so you would say to us, um, boneen. If it was all women, you would say bonote.
Yes ma'am.
Toda. So you would say to us, boneen, conversations.
I don't know, I don't know what the word, I don't know how to say conversation in Hebrew. That's a, that's a different, that's a different struggle there. But yeah. It made it bad?
It might be like one of the conjugations of Metabair.
Yeah, let, let, let's see.
Okay.
Uh, it'll be interesting. Build conversations. Yeah? Ha. Mar, marot. Ha marot? Copy. Let's just put it in there, see. Marot, yeah. Conversations, did I type the right word? Conver, no. Conversations.
Now it's wrong, okay.
Okay. Build conversations. She, she caught. Okay. She caught. I can say, guys, I don't, I don't know every Hebrew word there is either, so y'all, you know, you had me get those little corners and edges that I don't know. She caught, or she caught. It's a, it's a scene, not a shame. So you could say, what? Um, uh. Anachnu baninu sikot. Ha to, ha, hayom. We built conversations today. Anachnu baninu sikot. Hayom, alright, we built conversations today. Um, very interesting. Maybe we could ask, uh, somebody, somebody should probably ask about that, make sure we do, we're saying it right. But that's, this is exactly how I would, how I would start my study of, of a word or, or, or phrase or sentence. Is by going into Pialim and trying to hash it out, you know, American style. And then going back and trying to correct those little nuances that I don't know. Cause those nuances, you just, you just can't know them.
No.
Yeah, you just, you just gotta defer to somebody who is fluent or native.
Snake Amore.
Hey.
Would you, um, opa, uh, uh. Anachnu, we built compositions today, anachnu.
Yeah, I, I said, anachnu baninu. I'm gonna go back and show you, baninu. Look at this. Baninu. Anachnu baninu, and, and, and trust me, the anachnu is redundant. You don't have to put the anachnu. Yeah, you could just say baninu, because the, the nu automatically implies that it was we.
Oh.
Baninu sikots.
Sikots.
Hayom. We built conversations today. And you see how in Hebrew, how we can leave off certain words and we can leave off those, those little, there, there is no word-for-word translation from English, but this is where the ebonics comes in. The ebonics that we speak, that, that street slang, that gutter ghetto slang we talk in, in the hood at the family reunion, i- 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 it falls back to the same syntactic structure as Afro-Asiatic Hebrew, which is why we know that we were Hebrews before we came to America. Because we revert back to this etymological, uh, understanding of language. And, and you know, these, these white folks are just now getting the understanding of Hebrew and Afro-Asiatic language structure, whereas it was innately part of our conversation that we reverted back to once we learned English. We took English and applied Hebrew grammatical structures to English and how we came up with ebonics. So, that's where you get dode, and that's where you get dude, that's where you get ain't. That's why you say, you good, instead of are you good? And you good could mean four different things. It could mean leave me alone, it could mean I'm okay. It could mean a lot of different things, you know? You good, you good, you good, yeah, you good, you know? It, it can mean a lot of different things, same as in Hebrew.
They have a feeling Barbados as well.
Say that again?
We have a feeling Barbados as well, like one of.
Okay, give, give, give me an example. You have an example?
So we would say like, what we're doing. Alright, a one of me, in Hebrew means you're all, you all.
Yeah.
Is using a context of you all with a singular purpose.
Right, a- 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 and, and they thought we were talking slang or we didn't know any language, and we were really speaking using the codex of our own language. And we, be, and because we did not know enough to articulate that, they just chalk it up to us not knowing how to pronounce their language, you know?
Speaking bad English to us.
Yeah, yeah.
Another one is kama na. Kama, kuma, nah, please.
Oh, okay.
So we could, as children going, why are you seeing those things? It's not, it's not, there's no correlation to English. So what do you mean, what we're doing are?
That's very interesting. Yeah, that's interesting. Um, another, another word is, uh, when we would say, uh, master say come here. Alright, master say come here, and, and the word for master was not talking about master. Like calling you my authority or use me over my head. The word master was talking about you being my oppressor. I think this is the, the spelling of it. Master. I wanna say, maybe it's, maybe it's the S H, that's right. Uh, mem, this, masa, it means oppressor. But anyway, I don't, I don't know the, the correct spelling of it, but, uh, it's, it's, it's in here somewhere. I, I put it up before. Masah, which means you are the one oppressing me, and you need to get your foot off my neck. It's in here. Let's see the full conjugation. Maybe this is it, like to be taxed or to be oppressed, right? You don't want taxing me. Stop, le- leave me alone, stop taxing me. But it's, it's in there, it means to oppress. Um, but anyway, th- this is, you know, those, 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 those little nuances of language that, you know, that we are not privileged to until we start to explore our native language, you know, and this is a, thi- this slang or ebonics is a nativity that is built into us that we revert back to, even if we can't articulate it in words. It is something that is part of our spirit and who we are, and it's just very interesting.
Can I give another example?
Yes ma'am, please.
One of my favorites. Uh, because we, people used to call people from Louisiana, like we would say, you going to the store? Like, uh, like we're asking a question, but we're making a statement, you know? And so we, we do that quite often. Like, I'm not asking you, are you going to the store? Um, I'm saying you going to the store, but the way that you say it makes it a question.
Right, it's called inflection. The way you inflect on certain parts of the sen- of the statement, uh, solidify it as a question.
Right, so it's a lot of, you see a lot of that in Hebrew. If you don't put that question mark, if you're reading the Hebrew, you might think it's a statement when it's actually a question.
Right. Absolutely. Yeah, and, and that, that's what, that's one of the beautiful things about Hebrew is you can say so much with so little language. It shows how, it shows how inferior English is as well. Okay, so, um, that's, that was a good brain break, guys. We needed to take a little break. Um, here we go with, uh, the, a part two. We're not gonna go over part two as much. Um, we're going to just look at it real quick and we'll see what we can, we'll see what we can glean from it real quick. And then, maybe I'll put this on the, uh, the chat, uh, as a document that you guys can go back and, and look at and, and, and work on, on your own. It'd be really good to, uh, go back and work on. So here we have, uh, conversation part two. And it says here. Shalom Doda. Doda being aunt. Doda translating literally to aunt, but we call anybody that is, uh, is a sign of respect of an elder or of a senior member, somebody that's older than us, that we have respect for. We call them our aunt or uncle, dode, doda. Shalom doda. And then they will reply, what? Shalom bain, alright? And, and, and so, I, I, I had a conversation with, with some Hebrews, and they were, they were arguing with me about Jesus being the son of God, and I was like, well, is Jesus the actual physical son of God from his loins? Or is son of God like, uh, uh, uh? Or is son of God like, uh, 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 a romantic term? That is extended or bestowed upon somebody who is a disciple or pupil of another person? And of course, i- the latter is more true than the, than, than the, than the, him being the actual physical son of God. Uh, but they couldn't, they couldn't understand it, right? And you know, Ezra knows that our spiritual father was Sar Malach, right? And so my name is Yochanan bin Malach. And my, my dad is a Muslim, my, my birth, biological dad is Muslim. And he understands the whole Eastern or Hebrew way of looking at father and son relationships. And so if this person that you look up to is giving you instruction. And, and guiding you in a faith or in a direction, then. Uh, a lot of times in the Hebrew culture, you call that person like a parent. Or that person that is guiding you, he's gonna look after you and protect you and nurture you. Just as he would his son. And that's why Jesus or Yahshua said, in my father's house are many mansions, right? That's why he, when he was baptized, according to the New Testament, uh, reading, when he was baptized. Only after he was baptized, did God, the Father, I guess, descend from heaven and say. This day you are my son and whom I'm well pleased, right? So he wasn't always the son of God in the sense, he became the son of God. He became the son of God when he fulfilled that part of his mission. And the reason why the Pharisees, other folks at his day were mad at him. Is because he called himself the only begotten son, right? Which is another. Another term that we have to address from the Hebrew understanding of what he meant by only begotten. Not that I'm the only son of God. Cause he, he clearly says that what, we are all gods in the sense. But he says, I'm the only begotten son in the sense that I am the preeminent person of this understanding. Right, and you gotta hear what I'm saying. So the same way, uh, in the kingdom, Ben Ami became the spiritual leader. He became the preeminent authority of Toraat Ben Ami. Yahshua was the preeminent authority of Toraat Ben Yahshua, right? Or Toraat Ben Yosef. So we are taking, a lot of times, we take these things literally. When we should be taking these things with the understanding of how the Hebrews saw these things. A- 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 and we, we kinda lose the. We kinda lose the true purpose of these things when we try to apply it to our twenty twenty-three modern understanding. Without considering what the Hebrews were saying. You know, so I just wanna throw that out there. It's a very good point that yes, doda means aunt. But anybody that you respect can be your aunt. And yes, Bane means son, but anybody that you give guidance to be, can become your son. Anybody wanna expound upon that?
I am.
We'll talk later, brother Jonathan.
Absolutely.
Uh, when the, the word, the word bro, or brother. Um, that we used to refer to one another is a similar. A similar occasion to that.
Well, we, we call each other aunt in a coat, you know, brother all the time, sister all the time. You know, we even say, not I love you to death, but I love you to life, you know? And, and they can get that when it's talking about us. Oh, I can call you my aunt. But then when, when, when I say that I'm a son of God, or when, when, when he says that he is a son of God. All of a sudden you wanna take it literally. I mean, those kind of things are. Those kind of things become troublesome when, when you, when you wanna apply it here, but you don't wanna apply it there. So you, so yeah, that's a, that's a good example. Anybody else have, uh, something they wanna expound upon?
They refer to women as auntie in Africa, parts of Africa also.
Absolutely, they do.
Also, um, I noticed in Africa. Like, um, one of the sisters that I met, her biological nieces and nephews. She calls them, they're her children.
Mm-hmm.
My daughter, even though they're not her biolock, they're her sister's children. And they don't live with her. They live with her sister, but they're her children as well. So like, I have. Nieces, nephews spiritually, and they call me Emma, you know? So, yeah.
Yeah, I, my brother's kids will meet sometime to go places. And, and, and of course, they call me uncle. But when people would ask us, are these all your kids? Yeah, these are all my kids. And I treat them simply, and if they all came from my loins, cause these are my brother's kids. If, if I'm, if anybody's gonna protect them as well as my brother can protect them, it's gonna be me.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
My mother calls my son, my son is her firstborn grandchild. She calls her, she calls my son her firstborn.
Mm-hmm.
This is a Hebrew understanding of the family.
Uh, Maury, but I have, um, my grandsons, I call them my son, maybe. My son, my son, you know, but those are actually my grandsons. And, um, I have a, a neighbor, she calls me mommy. Hello, but she's, she's a neighbor, no relative, no relation at all.
Respect.
Mom, but so as a sign of respect as well as you rightly saying, um, anybody you respect. And that's kind of, uh, to me, that's association. Uh, you, you know, it's different from saying miss, miss Sylvia, or miss Sarah, or miss Nalo. When you say auntie, your mom, you have that sort of connection, um, the connection than saying mister, misses so and so, you know?
Definitely. That, 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 that connection is stronger than the formal. Expression of mister and misses or a teacher and, you know, we, we do acknowledge those positions that people have. But at the end of the day, Sarah Samachia, I say shalom doda, you know? And I embrace her like I embrace any aunt or any mother that I know in the kingdom, you know?
Nakal.
Okay. Somebody else has something, go ahead and say it, don't, don't be shy. Nobody else? Okay, um, so we have shalom doda, then we have shalom. Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, I have a question because some people, um, don't believe in the Jesus concept. So can you, can you, uh, give me a little background on that? Because you know, you know me for a long time, I rejected that.
Yeah.
And, uh, I came to the understanding that. Uh, there was a difference between this. Person and a Hebrew Messiah, a Messianic person, a warrior.
Mm-hmm.
At that time period.
So to, 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 to tickle your fancy, to, to tickle your ears real quick, um. Did, was there actually a historical person? That we, that some know Jesus or Yahshua, did that person actually exist? The answer is unequivocally yes. He did exist. Now, was he the son of God? In the sense that the Christians, uh, or Christianity tries to purport? The answer is, a- again, is yes. But guess what? All of us were our sons of God, Ben Ami is a son of God. Yeah, Adam was a son of God, David was a son of God. All of these men were anointed messengers, that's all Messiah means is messenger. All of these people were anointed messengers that came down with a message. Or that came down with a warning for the Yah's people. And so we should not. We should not put Yahshua into a higher frame of reference. Because he called himself the only begotten son. No, he was the first messenger to deliver his message. And his message was what? One of the looming destruction, he says, heaven and earth will pass away, right? People think that's talking about heaven and the, and the physical earth. But what they don't understand, when you read in the book of Josephus, Josephus was a scholar and historian. That lived during the sacking of Rome, and he explains a lot of these things. Josephus explains in his writings that heaven and earth is what they called the second temple. So when he says heaven and earth will pass away, he's talking about that temple, which, which, what, which was destroyed. So Yahshua was this person came, he was educated in Egypt. So all, all these people talk about they're Egyptian and they're, uh, Yahshua was educated in Egypt. He was one of the last members, one of the last descendants of the Hazmonian dynasty. The Hazmonian dynasty started in Greece. When, uh, Antiochus Epiphanes, um. Invaded Jerusalem. And took the northern kingdom into captivity. Antioch Epiphanes was fighting and trying to devour the temple. And the Maccabean brothers, it was five brothers, under Yahshua Maccabeus. Um, they started to fight against Antiochus Epiphanes. And one of those generals under the brothers, I think it was Jonathan or David, I can't remember. Uh, he was the patriarch of the Hazmonian dynasty. Say again?
Was it Judah, Judah Maccabi?
Judah, I'm sorry, you're right, Judah, not Jonathan Judah. Judah Maccabeus. He became the patriarch of the Hazmonian dynasty, which, because what, what happened was. Antiochus Epiphanes was smart. He says, hey, these Hebrews are Sabbath worshippers. So this, this sacks the whole idea of it being a lunar Sabbath, right? He says, these guys are Sabbath workers, so if we wait until the seventh day, when they're resting. We can go out and fight against them and we can kill them all because they won't lift their sword on the seventh day. So he would, he would go out for six days and he would come back on the seventh day and go to war with them. And Judah was like, hey, if we don't fight even on the Shabbat, then he's going to destroy all of us. So they prayed to the most high and he got a vision of a dove or something carrying an olive branch or whatever it was. That told him that Yah was going to bless them if they went out even on the Sabbath and fought against the, the Greeks. And so they went out and they fought against the Greeks on the Sabbath and they prevailed. And they created a stronghold in, in Israel, which is where you get Masada. They created a stronghold in the mountains and that is where the Hazmonian dynasty laid its foundation. And even, um, um, even in Galilee, which was known, uh, was, which was a city of rebels. That's why Yahshua or Jesus was in Galilee. It was known for rebels and there were several groups of rebels, there was the Sicara, the zealots. Uh, they called the Sicara the, the dagger men, they would assassinate you. They would kidnap you and they would cut you in pieces and then they would disappear. And you would find these people with swords and daggers in their, in their bodies, you know? That was part of the Hazmonian revolt. And so Yahshua was this revolutionary that came during this time. Man, Rome was tired of Israel, like we need this land. Because this is where we're getting all of our food from. It was the breadbasket of the Roman Empire and so Rome needed to be in the Middle East. But they were sick and tired of them Hebrews, cause they were a people that were notoriously hard to rule. Does anybody wanna tell me, if you can guess, or maybe you know, why were the Hebrews so hard to rule over?
I don't know.
Yeah, they had a bureaucratic government.
Say again?
Only because they have a bureaucratic government.
Uh, no, the reason why the Hebrews were hard to rule over is because in the Torah. If you read in the Torah, I think it's in Leviticus, it says that you shall not let anyone not of your brethren rule over you.
Nah.
And so the Hebrews were very hard to rule over because if you. That is why a lot of Hebrews don't vote now. Say again?
I'm so sorry, I'm fussing at Nover.
Uh-oh. That is, that is why a lot of Hebrews refused to vote in the elections. Because why am I gonna vote for one of these people to rule over? What did the, uh? What did the Pharisees say to Pontius Pilate when they were about to crucify Jesus? He said what? We have no king, we have no authority but Caesar. That was, I mean, we don't understand how revolutionary or how aghast or how. How juxtaposed that, uh, we read that. And, and, and I'm even, I remember even in the church, we would read that and they would just read right past that. But now I come back and read it with my Hebrew understanding and I know that it was a law. It was Torah that you are not supposed to have anybody rule over you that was not of your brethren.
Hmm.
That's why even when they came back from Persia, with, under Darius, the Bible says what? They had to prove who they were by the pedigree of their fathers. Cause they wouldn't let them rule over them if they didn't, if they couldn't prove they were Hebrews. You had to show your father's house. So when these Pharisees says, we have no king but Caesar, that was like in total rebellion and opposition. To what all the Hebrews stood for. And that's why Yahshua says what? Forgive them for they know not what they do. So we gotta put these things in its proper context. I'm not trying to preach, y'all, I'm not, this is legal.
History. Hold on.
Uh, any more questions? We're, we're almost at the end of the class, guys.
Yes, Maury.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I understand the historical view, uh, et cetera, and so on. How do you view the actual dying for other people's sins?
Hmm.
How do you, I don't know, see the die of other people's sins, um. Huh, well, that, that's, that, that gets a little bit more complicated, okay? But I, I'll do my best to try to explain it really to you really quick, um. The Bible says in, in, in the, in the Old Testament. That it was never intended for the blood of animals to put away sin.
Okay.
Okay? And also it says that no man shall die for another man's sins. That's what it says in the Old Testament. So, but it, but it also says this. I will curse you to the third and fourth generation of them that hate me. So we have this, we, we're in this period of grace or this grace period. Where we have the opportunity to. Re- regain or re- re-embrace, you know, our identity as Hebrews. Um, as devout men, as whatever, whatever label you wanna put on us. And not, not all of us are gonna do that. So the best advice that I have for you is. Don't operate under the auspices of, I can sin all I want and, and covered by the blood of Yahshua. The Bible says, to him who knows to do good and do what did not, to him it is a sin. Okay, so for, 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 for you, drinking might not be wise for somebody else. I can drink and not, not descend into drunkenness. You know? Um, some people will argue that, um. Priests shouldn't, uh, priests can't have more than one wife or something like that, you know? And I could argue, okay, well, I'm never gonna be a priest, I'm never gonna be a bishop, so that means I should be able to have one, more than one, right? Or, um, I mean, just all kinds of things, right? Going to the military, some people say that Hebrews shouldn't go to the military. I can't find that anywhere in scripture. So you have to use your best judgment. But you, you also can't use, this is what, this is. But you you also can't use, this is what this is what we used to, right? I got thirty-four lambs, which means I can commit thirty-three sins.
Oh. Oh, nice.
Right? So I mean, my best advice is to follow Torah. I don't care if you call yourself a Christian, because at the end of the day, a Christian just means follower of Christ. Christ is the English word for anointed one and Yeshua was an anointed one, but so was Ben and me. And so was Adam and so was David and so was Saul. What what did Saul say to the guy? Claimed he killed Saul. He says, lay your hands on that guy, don't let him get away because he is killed, he has slain Yah's anointed. So if David is telling you that Saul in his himself was anointed, then if if Saul could be anointed, then hell, anybody can be anointed. So I I I try to learn from everybody and I I don't cast judgment on Muslims. Because at the end of the day, Muslim just means you you submit to the will of God. You know, uh, Christian, okay, you say Jesus. It may, it it it, as long as you're not trying to feed me no pork, as long as you're not trying to commit adultery with with me against my wife, you know, against me with my wife, as long as you're not trying to kill me, harm me, then if you want to call him Jesus, I don't have no problem with you calling him Jesus. I don't have no problem with you calling him Allah. I have no issues with Mohammed. I have no issues with any of the other Hebrew Israelite leaders, you know what I'm saying? None of that is is important. Yah is gonna sort all that out. Yeah, but but Yeshua was just, Yeshua was an anointed messenger who who was bestowed a great message that we were to follow. And that message was relevant for the people of Yeshua's time. And that message, although it resonates in twenty twenty-three, we have our own messengers for our time. The Bible says Yah has never, look at this, the Bible says Yah has never left his people without a prophet. So if he has never left his people without a prophet, but the last prophet was here twenty two thousand years ago, that that statement, it contradicts itself. Either his people ended two thousand years ago or his prophets ended two thousand years ago or his people still exist and his prophets still exist. Is that is that clear now?
But I think there's a scripture that says the law and the prophets were until John.
Say again?
There's a scripture that says the law and the prophets were until John.
The law and the prophets.
Well, until John, I think that's uh.
Were unto John?
Until John, I think I remember reading that scripture, yeah. Hmm, in the New Testament, I think I read something like that when I was a Christian.
Luke sixteen and sixteen?
Yeah.
The law and the prophets were until John. Since that time, the kingdom of God is preached and every man presses into it. Okay?
Yes.
Uh, do you wanna ex- expound to me about this?
No, what I, you spoke about um the the prophets always uh being present or what have you, but I remember that text that says the law and the prophets were until John.
Oh, okay, okay.
But of course, I understand that um we would say that of course the law or the Torah, the teachings and so on didn't stop uh, yeah, but this is a very deep subject and for me, um, I I'm trying to clarify some of the things because the whole concept of uh the Christian concept of Jesus being God and being uh dying for sins and what have you. I can understand, I I value, I value teachings, I value good advice and proverbs, et cetera, that and parables, et cetera. But um the fact of the dying of the city sins part, you know, that part there is what I I do already subscribe to um according to the channel. So, but this is what I was looking at, um, some people don't.
So so look here, it says in verse seventeen, and it is easier for heaven and earth to pass than one tithe of the law to fail. So this here is showing you, right? That they called the the temple heaven and earth. And and we assert this under the English understanding of the heavens and the physical earth. But in the days of this, in the days that this was written, the the Hebrews of Rome called the temple of uh Jo- of of Joshua bin Zerubbabel. He was the high priest that that came out of Persia and built the second temple, Joshua bin Zerubbabel. They called his temple heaven and earth. And so that's why he says it is easier for heaven and earth to pass than for one tithe of of the law to fail. So whether whether or not you we, whether you want to say anything about Jesus Christ or what he did, what he said, he never taught anything but the law. And that law is the law of Moses. He didn't teach anything but the law.
Yeah, uh, Brother Jonathan?
Yes, sir.
All right, great, great class, great class. You know, um, uh, I got I got I got two questions and like I said, and you know, it's not a Christian class, a Hebrew class.
Yes.
But you're absolutely right in the aspect of it. Christ said that he never came to abolish the law but to fulfill it. And his number one message that he taught was love. Because if you love your brother, how you gonna kill him? How you gonna steal from him? How you gonna commit adultery? You know? So he said, if you go ahead and you feel the love, then you fulfill the whole law. But my question is this here. Where is in the Bible where God said he would never leave his people without a prophet?
Let me see. Um, I'm trying to think of the wording. Uh, he will never do anything except by his prophets. I'm just gonna put this in there. I'm not, I'm not so uh.
Except he reveals just unto the prophets.
Some of those people, um, some of those, some people can can pull these verses up just off the top of their head. I can't uh, I can't do that. So here we go. Surely the Lord God would do nothing, but he revealed his secret unto his servants, the prophets.
Yes, what I, my question is, is where is it in the Bible when it said that he would never ever um not leave his message to any of the prophet, like he will always have a prophet here? What where is that, where is this, where is it, where does it state that in the Torah? And what also do they state that up in the Bible?
Okay, so that's a good question. Let me, let me go ahead and do it like this, let's see. Um, let's just type it in, God will never leave his people without a prophet. That's that's the question you're asking?
Yes, sir. I can, I can save you some time, you're not gonna find it. That's that's the reason why I brought that up.
Okay. You can say that, yes, bro, I'm not gonna. Okay, so you have two questions, what was the same question?
No, that, no, I was, I was agreeing with you. Yeah, I was agreeing with you on the one with the law. Because Christ said, like I said, if you feel that love, you know, he said, I didn't come to abolish the law, but to fulfill it, you're absolutely correct on that. But where I didn't, I I didn't agree because I don't, I don't recall ever reading in the Bible what it says. In no ti- in no time, I will leave my people without a prophet. I I don't recall reading it.
It might not say that in those exact words, I'm paraphrasing. But also, I I do want you to consider that I am pulling this up in English, the English language, and I'm not pulling this up in the Hebrew. And so the next thing that I would do, well, the next layer of the investigation would go into finding these scriptures and or finding scriptures that are saying whatever they're saying and then looking at them in the Hebrew to see if the English translation of it is correct.
Okay.
No, that that is, yeah, that's a good point. That is a very good point. Because a lot of people forget that the Bible is just a translation.
It's just a translation, yeah. And and I'm paraphrasing a lot of things because like I say, it wasn't, it was not the intent of the class to go into a a theological discussion. Um, but the uh, the 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 theology of Hebrew Israelites, all right? Uh, which I like, I like to say that we are the fourth Abrahamic faith, right? You have Judaism, you have Christianity, and you have Islam, and you can't loop Hebrew Israelites totally into any one of those three theologies or theological systems. We have our own theology. Um, so in the Hebrew Israelite theology, we understand that Yah will do nothing. Now Yah is not a past, present, and future word. Yah is an omnipresent word, correct? It is both past and present and future here and there from one end of the earth to the other end, Alpha and Omega. So he says Yah, I would not leave my people. And he says what? If you can, if you can, if you can measure the height of the heavens or measure the depth of the sea, only then will Israel stop being a people of my, was, only then will Israel stop being my people. So if Yah is eternal and Israel, ami olam, right? Yawa olam, Yah is eternal, everlasting, and ami olam, his people are everlasting and eternal, then his messengers must also be everlasting and eternal. He would do nothing unless, he would do nothing without revealing his word to his messengers or to his prophets. And that could be you, that could be me, that could be anybody. Yeah, hell, Yah had a donkey speak for him one time.
Yo. Yeah, so what would be, hey, Brother Jonathan, what would be me being a beginner? Would it be a good thing for me to start off to kind of play catch up with the, like, the Hebrew alphabet or or what?
Question, um. Sometimes what I do is I give a quiz to see where people are and to see where people uh, what it is you're trying to, you see, because every everybody learns Hebrew for a different reason. Now, if your reason is to be conversant in in modern Hebrew, then I would say start with the sight words, right? Words that we say in high frequency, words that we uh use all the time, right? How do you say apple? How do you say good or how do you say sweet? How do you say goodbye and hello? You know, those kind of high frequency words. If your purpose for learning Hebrew is to open up the Bible and and peel back the layers and study the etymology of the words, then I say, yeah, you're gonna have to start with, you know, pulling your favorite Bible verses and memorizing how to say your Bible verses. So one of my favorite Bible verses, for instance, is Psalm, is Isaiah sixty and one, right? Kumii urri kibao urre, right? Learn how to say your favorite Bible verse and learn how to expound upon some of those words. And then you build your repertoire from there. So um, I know uh us, you know, and 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 what you asked me about, um, don't want to give too much information over the over the car, but for for you, I I would, I would endeavor to say, you know, you need to go into the study of some of the words, maybe the etymology of the words and uh trying to find the connection between that which we study um on Saturday and that what you're reading in the scripture. Because it is connected, but you you probably won't find words like Elu in 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 the in the in the Bible, right? But I do know what that means, right? Because El is the root word of it and El means power or our God. And the Uu means we are God. So when you say Elu, you're saying we are God, you know what I'm saying? So there is uh, there is some Hebrew symbology and semantics that you could apply to what we study uh on Saturdays.
Yeah, okay. All right, I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. And and what I'm gonna do is I'm going to, I'm going to go back and I have, I mean, I have a file cabinet full of stuff that I've studied over the last twenty twenty-two years. I'll go through there and I'll find where it was that I determined in my own summarization of what I know, where it said, where I came up with the idea of Yah would never leave us without a prophet. And I'll come back and I'll get back with you and let you know exactly where I got that from so that we can clear up any uh lingering uh questions that might be uh about it, okay?
Well, see, well, well, to me, if you go back from me being of the Christian faith, you know, it always tells us, what Christ said way ago, he said, I believe you're a Comforter. And that Comforter for us, who is just the messenger, is the Holy Spirit that joins within us. So from that aspect, I can see exactly, you know, where you're coming from. I just want to see where did you, where did you read that, like, in those exact words, what you had said? That's that was my question right there.
Absolutely. I just uh, I'm glad we we are, I'm glad that you uh, you you came to ask. Yes, go ahead.
So, um, again, with the the translations, uh, I agree with you. But the children of Israel were always looking for these messengers to come and bring this word because they stayed in trouble. You know, they were always getting into stuff. So I was just, I was pulling up some scriptures. And this is from First Kings twenty-two, verse five. It says, but Jehoshaphat also said to the king of Israel, first seek the counsel of Yah, or they have all capital letters, uh, Lord. So the king of Israel brought together the prophets, about four hundred men, and asked them, shall I go to war against Ramath Gilead? That's when they was about to, trying to see if they was gonna go to war. Go, they answered, for the Lord will give it to the king's hand. But Jehoshaphat asked, is there not a prophet of Yah here whom we can inquire of? So they they know, like, the prophets were always among them somewhere. They just find them and seek them out. The king of Israel answered Jehoshaphat, there is still one man through whom we can inquire of Yah. But I hate him because he never prophesized anything good about me, but always bad. He was Makiah, right, the son of Amla. The king should not say that, Jehoshaphat replied. So the king of Israel called one of his officials and said, bring Makiah, son of Amla, at once. And so of course, they had the meeting or whatever. But the prophets were were all around our people. You know, is it, every every prophet doesn't have a book written personally about him. They were, they dwelled amongst the people. That's just how it was. And we always sought them out, um, like the kings in this instance, we always sought them out for uh, for knowledge, uh, for when we get ready to go to war, for whatever, if it was gonna be a famine or whatever, the prophets were always amongst the people. So I just wanted to say that, y'all.
Yeah, Torah Rabbah, uh, Israel, Torah Rabbah. Um, and and like, man, like like these, these are the good conversations that we need to have. A a lot of the camp Hebrews are not able to have these conversations because they are practicing memorization of scriptures to back you into con- confusion and rebuttals and they know how to get you all riled up. Then they have people screaming at me, throwing you off your guard, you know, so yeah. Uh, these are good conversations. Um, you you mentioned something about the word, right? Or the the Comforter. It says here in John six and sixty-three that it is the spirit that quickens, the flesh profiteth nothing. The words or the Torah, right, the the law, that I speak to you, they are spirit and they are life. So um, the Comforter was, of course, us getting back to the the written word, the law. This is one of the reasons why we stress in our community, Brother Hall, Brother Brother Hill. This is one of the reasons why we stress that we should learn Hebrew because there are forty-seven thousand mistranslations in the King James Bible. Yeah, that number, that number is unfathomable, but it's forty-seven thousand mistranslations in the King James Bible. And so
Yeah, unfortunately, unfortunately, if we don't know Hebrew, that's 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 all we have. But I agree with y'all, I I think any translation, you know, I'm saying, they're gonna take, like I said, what it means to them, they They're gonna take, like I said, what it means to them, they're gonna put it in their own words, you know? Um, I think this is a great conversation. I come here to learn, you know, things of that nature. You know how many you talk all the time. Is that, and I do feel like, you know, saying, just anybody that's delivering God's message, you know, saying it's a messenger from God can be a prophet. I just wanted to find out in the Bible, where it actually said that even that story, what, um, the young lady, the young lady told about up in there, I know that story very well, because like I said, God had his own prophets to speak to the children of Israel. So why you want to somebody else's, you know, why you're not seeking your own? I under- I understand that. I just want to, I want to learn Hebrew, so I can, like you said, I can go back and go to my original Bible verses, and I can break down some of these misquotes and these misinterpretations to understand the true meaning, what was actually said.
Yes, sir, that's absolutely good. And look, and we're gonna charge you, Brother Hill, to come and meet us one day in Israel. You know, we have a, a great, we have a, hey, we have a great time in Israel. We have a great time.
Yeah, yeah, hey, I tell you what, it's all, it's already, it's already in the works, brother.
Hey, guys, the time is well spent. It's almost nine o'clock. Uh, we usually only go to eight-thirty. Um, if anybody wants to say something, I don't want to restrict the floor. You are, you are free to say what's on your heart. Um, I'll be on as long as you need me to be, but if not, we're gonna go ahead and close out.
And Maury.
King.
There, there's a scripture that says, God who, I mean, we paraphrasing here, in sundry times has spoken unto us by his prophets, but now he speaks us, uh, via his son.
And, uh, the Hebrews, yeah. Yes, that's a, that's a very good, I, I love this verse, and I'm gonna tell you why. Let me go to it real quick. It says here, now, this was written to the Hebrews, right? There were seven, there, there were a lot of, uh, different things, right? Thessalonians. Now, you know that, uh, let's see, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, Acts, Romans, Corinthians, so Romans, Corinthians, Galatians, Ephesians, Philippians, Colossians, and Thessalonians. These were assemblies. These were Hebrew Israelites that were living in these places that Paul and his messengers were writing to. Okay? Uh, uh, keep that in mind, that these, they call them, the word, the word in the New Testament is called Gentile. But the word, if you try, if you look in the, the Greek lexicon, the word Gentile is translated from the Greek word Helen, which means Hellenistic or Hellenized. And so these people from these seven, uh, territories were Hebrews who were Hellenized into the, into the, uh, the Greek state. So they were Hebrew speaking Greeks. They were not Greeks by natural birth. They were Israelites by birth, who were citizens of these different states. And so Paul is writing to them, trying to teach them and everything else. And then finally, uh, we, we don't know who wrote the, this epistle to the Hebrews. They assume it was Paul, but he writes to the Hebrews in general, and he says this. God who has sundry times and had diverse manners spoken to this time's past unto our fathers by the prophets, has in these last days spoken to us by his son, whom he hath pointed air of all things, by whom also he made the worlds, right? Who being the brightest of his glory and the express image of his person, and abhorting all things by the word of his power, when he made, when he had by himself purged our sins, sat down on the right hand of the majesty on high, being made so much better than the angels or the messengers, right? The only begotten. He, also he hath by inheritance obtained a more excellent name than they. For, who, or where is it at? I want to see where, I'm gonna skip down, it says, where he says ministers of flame and fire. Oh, and of the angels, he said, and of the angels, he said, who make it is angel spirits and his ministers of flame and fire. So just the, the, the summarization that I'm gonna give you is, this was, uh, the writer of Hebrews telling you that Yeshua's message was superior to the teachings and to the confusion of the people of his time. And he, and, and we have to kind of put the message of Yeshua, although it is still relevant today, just like the law of, 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 uh, Moses still has its relevance today, right? That's why we don't eat pork, that's why we don't eat shellfish, that's why we don't practice homosexuality, right? These things were still relevant in most, that Moses wrote, and the stuff that Yeshua wrote were still relevant as well. Uh, his message was one of what? Getting back to the, the true essence of Torah or the true essence of worship, which is what? If you love me, you keep my commandments. And, and we can, and I know there's a lot of different people that might interpret that a lot differently. I can only give you the Hebrew understanding of it, because I'm an Hebrew. And that is why we, um, that is why we say that there is nothing greater than the Torah, right? There's nothing greater than the instructions. Because every time Yeshua or Jesus says something, he said what? Is it not written? Is it not written, right? Is it not written? And although he does say some things that might seem to contradict the scriptures, right? For instance, he says what? Uh, it was written that you shall not, a, a man, lay it on the man who committed adultery. But I say, e- even if you look at a, a man's wife to lust, you commit adultery with her in your mind, right? That is not a, he is not negating the, the scriptures, but what he, he's not negating the Torah. What he is doing is, he's bringing it into his fuller understanding. Because they were trying to, they were trying to, uh, what's the word? Um, they were trying to cover bad deeds with scripture. Boy, y'all are gonna make me teach, I don't want to teach, but I'm gonna say one more thing, and then I'm gonna call it, okay? Uh, I'm gonna go to Malachi, and I believe it's Malachi, chapter three. It says here, um, um, let me see. Go ahead.
Is he yet speaking through prophets? Even the last, this is spoken, what through his son? So is he still speaking to the prophets?
So, remember, this was written two thousand years ago. Okay? So this was, this was written for the Hebrews in Yeshua's time. Because if those were the last days, here we are two thousand years later. And, and see, we see this thing, last days, and we think, oh, this is the end of the days. No, these, wh- wh- when he says last days, he's saying in our time. Because when that was written two thousand years ago, those were the latter days. Those were not the last days altogether. How could those have been the last days when, when we, when two thousand years has passed since that was written? So we, we, we put all this precedent, yes, sir.
Brother Jonathan, how do you say that, uh, Yeshua? Am I saying that right? Yeshua?
Sure.
Yeshua, okay, okay.
Yeshua, yes, sir, we say Yeshua. Um, I, I, boy, I want to find it real quick. I don't want you guys to miss out, uh, but let me see if it's in Malachi two. I'm looking where he says, for, uh, you, uh, cover your, uh, for you cover your garments with you, you, you treacherously, let me see. He says, uh, you dealt treacherously, dealt treacherously. Let me see, it's in Malachi, Malachi two fourteen.
Sixteen, two fourteen.
Sixteen? He said Malachi sixteen?
Two fourteen.
Okay, let me show you. So he says here, ye say, wherefore? Because Yah have been witnessed between thee and the wife of thy youth, against whom thou hast dealt treacherously, yet she is thy companion. And he says what? Um, he says, for the Lord God of Israel saith that he that puteth away, he hateth putting away. Why does he hate the putting away? He says, for one, covereth violence with his garment. This garment is the Torah. Because see, the Hebrew men were able to marry as many wives as they wanted, but they, the women were not able to marry as many husbands as they wanted. So the way they would cover violence with their garment, the garment being the law, they would put their wives away, but they would never divorce them, and those women would live in hiatus forever, and these men would go off and marry more women. And then twenty years later, when he finds out that his wife, that he separated from her but didn't divorce, uh, was remarried, he could say, well, you committed adultery, so I'm gonna kill you now. So, so Yah says, I hate the putting away, I hate the separation. Why don't you go ahead and divorce her so that she can go and be happy and find herself a husband? But you want to be treacherous and just separate from her, knowing she could never lawfully, uh, get remarried, and then you would use the law as a way of, of, of stoning her and the guy that she finds to replace you with. You know, so that's how they deal treacherously. So, so we gotta, we gotta really, we gotta really put these verses in context. The last days, yes, they were the last days. In these last days, he has spoken to us by his son. But he's not talking about all of the last days. He was talking about in his time. And I ask them all the time, people, I say, man, how could those be the last days when two thousand years has passed since he writ, since that was written? That was the, that was, we'll say Paul, maybe whoever was writing it. That was the writer speaking to the people in his days, because when that was written, those were the latter days back then. But time has transitioned since then, so those latter days are not our latter days. Our latter days, we have Ben Amine. In our latter days, we have Marcus Garvey, we have Martin Luther King Junior, we have Malcolm X, we have Elijah Muhammad. But we have a lot of different messengers, messias. Now, how could they be messias? Well, if you heard something from Marcus Garvey that put your life on a different path, then he saved you. That is a Messiah. If you heard something from Ben Amine that caused you to want to be vegan, or change your eating habits, or change how you thought, then that person saved your life. So they became your Messiah. And there's no, there's, we should have no problem recalling these men elevated or anointed or appointed messengers, because they are the ones that gave us the message that caused us to change our life. The same way Adam was given the breath of life or message, and put him on a different. Bible says, Adam received the breath of life and he became a living spirit. What was Adam before he received the breath of life? He was a dying spirit. He was a person on a path that was gonna certainly lead to destruction until Yah gave him a message that changed his trajectory and put him on a path to everlasting life. And we know that's the case, because he lived nine hundred years. But I'm not trying to teach y'all, it's nine o'clock, I'm trying to get off this car, y'all. Get on the car.
I, I, um, I, 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 I think that you, you, you have to, um, for the, the recording, you would have to edit this part, which was not true.
This is a good conversation, I'm, I'm not editing nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought there was some, okay, I, I wasn't sure if there was, uh, any guidelines, so that's why I said probably you may have to. Okay.
I didn't nothing. If, if y'all want to spoke it, it's gonna be on YouTube, and can't, and nothing, nothing the adversary can do, gonna take it down.
Hey, Brother Jonathan, I'm gonna enjoy myself, man. Great, great conversation, great teaching, I'll look to the next one.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I appreciate it, Brother Hill. Appreciate it. Hey, uh. Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate the conversation, and I will, uh, much more to learn, much more to learn, because.
Yes, ma'am.
You today's work.
Absolutely. So I'm gonna go ahead and lower the art.
Okay.
King. King. Nali. Yes. Anybody else? I mean, go ahead, I don't, I don't mind. If not, I'm gonna lower the art. Nali hagish, hakivoh.
What does hakivoh mean?
Um, your spirit.
Okay.
Or, or your countenance. Nali hagish hakivoh, right? Lower the spirit. The I is the, kivod is the spirit or the essence, the countenance. Nali hagish hakivoh. Yes, sir, good question. Kumii uri kiba orech, ukivol yahua alan zek zarah. Shuva yahua rivavu afay Israel, nehaleo yo.
Hallelujah.
Nehaleo yo.
Hallelujah.
Nehaleo yo.
Hallelujah.
Selah.
Selah.
Laila so, mispaka, shabu eto.
Alakum.
Quetor.
Dehitrao, tora rabbi.
Nei.
Kavod la ya.